This is the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees regular meeting for Thursday, October 2, 2014. The time is 7:00. If you would please call and roll.
President's House.
Here.
Trustee's House. Here. Trustee Mallory.
Here.
Trustee Collins.
Here.
Village manager Francis.
Here.
Village attorney Malina.
Here.
Also present, village clerk Haley.
Thank you. We have four. If you please join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much and welcome to everyone who's here and everyone who's watching at home. If you're here and you would like to make a comment to the board, you're welcome to do so at any time. We just ask that you be recognized by the president and that you make your comments from the podium so that the folks at home can hear and see what you have to say. First up tonight, our presentations and public comment. First, we're going to hear from our Public Works Director, Ed Bailey, who's going to give us an update on the 2014 sidewalk program. Mr. Bailey?
Good evening, everyone. The 2014 sidewalk program is funded from the capital budget and the budget for 2014 is $100,000. With this program this year is the first time that we've utilized the data that was collected from the inspection that was done in April of this year. And I'm happy to report that the inspection has turned out to be quite accurate and it's made the management of the program much easier to the point where I'm thinking I can delegate some of the responsibility for that. We focused, I focused on four blocks and we're doing the complete repair of them, replacing the defective sidewalk squares and saw cutting so that when the blocks are done at the end of the year, those blocks should be defect-free. With the program, the total amount of square footage that was replaced is 10,311 square feet. The sidewalk inspection program, which I alluded to a few minutes ago, identified 1,900, 1,900, let's see, 198,888 feet. Would have been easier to say 199,000 square feet. Sidewalk squares that met the criteria for replacement. And as I mentioned, we replaced 10,311 square feet. That's 5% of the total square feet of the sidewalk that's identified for replacement. We also did 1,024-inch feet of saw cutting or will do. We still have one more block to do, but we expect to do about 1,024-inch feet of sidewalk. There is 13,111 square feet that were identified in the inspection program representing the total amount of saw cutting that would be needed. What we've done this year is 8% of that total. And I'm hoping to do some slab raising or slab jacking with some, we don't have too much money left, but with that, I hope to do some slab raising focused on the downtown area. That's runs about $2.75 a square foot. The total amount that has been expended or will be expended on sidewalk replacement this year, this includes the sidewalk square replacement and the saw cutting, should be about $98,600. So I'll have maybe $1,000 left or so to try some slab raising. We're all aware of this issue discussion, I guess you could say, regarding the type of concrete that's used to replace the sidewalk. This year, we've used Portland cement, concrete, broom-finished. Previous years, for some years, exposed aggregate has been used. The difference in price is significant. The cost for Portland cement, broom-finished concrete is $6.75 a square foot. Exposed aggregate, $9.25. That's five-inch squares. So there's about a third price difference per square foot resulting in about one-third fewer squares that would have been replaced if we had used exposed aggregate. We replaced about 400 with Portland cement concrete. We would have probably did about, done about 300 with Portland cement concrete. So that is the report on the program. It's kind of the nuts and bolts for any questions.
As the time wears, the, if I remember correctly, because of the linseed oil or whatever, the finish is going to dull.
The, that issue really refers to the, what's referred to as the curing membrane that's used, curing compound, whatever. We specified clear. And when that concrete was poured, because I spent a fair amount of time focused on that with contractor to make sure they were aware of it, they sent me a spec on the type, on the material that they were going to use. And when that material was sprayed on the sidewalk, it was a dull gray. So the fact that the color has turned more white is not associated with the curing membrane that was used. I do think that there's many examples around this community of concrete that was poured in the last couple of years that's changed in color. And one site that has caught my attention is Riverside Car Care on Harlem Avenue, just south of the Addison Road intersection. There's a significantly large driveway apron that was installed two or three years ago. And that is, it's not, certainly not white. It's faded. It's kind of a brownish-tannish color. I'm certainly not an authority on cement or how it ages or anything like that, and we're on this journey of discovery together here. But it's my belief, just because you can see older concrete that doesn't have that white, white field, not feel, but white vision, I guess, of it. But I don't know the timeframe. You know, it's certainly going to take some time. But just by looking at older concrete, you just know it's not going to stay white forever. And all of this concrete that was installed in all four of these blocks, $70,000 worth, it's all white. You know, there's no, no other color that you could say it was other than white currently. And it's about, you know, two to three months old.
Well, my driveway was white, but now it doesn't look any different than the sidewalk that's in front of it.
Sure. I think that's likely what we'll experience with this, but I just don't know the timeframe that it would weather myself.
When you talked about doing the slab raising mostly in the downtown area, that's not something that's going to be redone with the streetscape project, is it?
No. You know, from the standpoint of the sidewalk replacement program, I was directed to stay away from the central business district. But what I found, and the more you look, the more you see, but the central business district, there's a lot of sound exposed aggregate sidewalk that subsided. And one example is right out here outside the police department entrance. There's a street lamp there and you can see how the sidewalk has subsided. And it creates trip hazards. And it's, you know, it's a sight, unsightliness.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
And there's many examples. And that's my idea, instead of replacing those because they are trip hazard and they would meet our criteria for some action, that where we have the sound sidewalk, there's some other examples where Portland cement concrete, older Portland cement concrete has subsided also. Walking away from here past the library, there's about three squares that are chronically covered with water when it rains. Those are, I don't know if I'll get to them this year, but there's an example of other ones I'd like to slab, I mean, raise the concrete itself a sound. It's just a matter that they're a hazard, especially with, if they get ice collecting on them.
Do you get underneath the jack it up and then backfill it?
What they do, they drill holes, one and 5/8 inch hole, about inch and a half hole in the, right through the surface and pump a cementous material. There's also a polyurethane that can be used. And then they plug it. So it isn't like it's, there's no, you can't notice that it's been raised, but it's, you know, it's, there's no defect. The defects are eliminated. A lot of community, we're not the first one. There's Naperville, I think, for instance, just for instance, has a significantly large slab raising program that they do. And it's 275 a square foot versus 675 for Portland cement and 925. So I think it'll be cost-effective, but certainly I want to try to do some of that this year.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Next up is public comment, and probably this would be a good time to hear from Chairwoman Lamontia, who I think wants to speak about sidewalks.
Thank you very much. So good evening, President Sells, trustees, manager Francis. Thank you for allowing me to present a few slides on this topic and the note that the decision has been pretty well secured, but I'm here to maybe sway a couple more people to think a little differently about, about the topic. On September 18th, I wrote a letter which was copied to the entire Board of Trustees. I believe you all received it at some point. Essentially, it states that in the second week of September of this year, less than a month ago, a concrete crew came down our block and replaced some portions of the sidewalks on South Coat Road and then around the corner down Downing. And I was thrilled to see it. I was very excited to see our concrete getting replaced, and so I was very happy about that. And the next day, nobody came back to expose the aggregate. And that was just as equally large a disappointment to me. It'll be just a second before we, before we even start. It's okay. I understand that it's more costly, but Riverside desperately needs consistency in its hardscape, and it's a topic we've touched on before and I think needs to be kept on top of our minds a little bit more. These new sections of concrete stick out like a patchwork quilt. They're not appropriate in our historic village. We have a great deal of pedestrian traffic and the youngest child can see that the new squares don't match the existing sidewalks. Neighbors have raised the question to me because of my involvement in the Landscape Commission, and I subsequently found out that this was agreed upon at the board meeting a couple of months ago, which I wasn't privy to at the time. I request that you reconsider this decision to preserve the integrity of the appearance of our village. Prior to addressing the board this evening, I talked to trustee Pollack a little bit, who responded to my initial letter with interest and respect for his colleagues, several friends I spoke to who reside in the village, as well as director Bailey of the Public Works Department, so I could better understand concerns beyond my own. I hope you'll indulge me as I use the yellow brick road and a few pictures of our own pathways to hopefully give you a new perspective on the importance of consistent color and texture in Riverside's pedestrian pathways. Okay, so slide one. Dorothy began her journey from munchkin land to Oz. The only direction she received was to follow the yellow brick road. Can you go back one for me, please? I submit that the residents and visitors to Riverside have and will continue to travel at least as far as Dorothy and her friends ever did in the iconic film, Over the Winding Walks of Riverside, Illinois. On this slide, you can see what our Riverside version of that special road looks like when its integrity is intact. Next slide, please. And over the years, many well-intended decisions have chipped away at the integrity of our winding walkways by adding colors. I was able to capture images of concrete with red and blue granite mixed into the sidewalk fabric down our very prominent Long Common Road and its adjacent blocks. Though these examples have faded over time, they're still clearly interrupting the continuity of the sidewalk as you walk down the road. The latest pours have introduced white for an all-American look. The lower images show old and new concrete of exposed aggregate adjacent to each other. And although you can see the difference, these squares blend well to form the visually continuous walkway, not just in color, but in texture. Next slide, please. And the results of these changes in the standard sidewalk color and finish can be seen throughout the village as you see them here. On the left is a north-facing view of Long Common, just north of Burlington. And as it has all four colors included in this patchwork of squares, you can see that it simply is not full of the integrity of the rest of our village and what Riverside deserves. On the right is a west-facing view on Addison Road, which includes all four colors as well. This was not something I had to seek out. These examples are everywhere throughout the village and it's becoming more and more chopped up. Next slide, please. Here you can see our proverbial yellow brick road, shown at the right, and images of two patchwork walkways as they wind past driveways and aprons of various homes. The board's decision to rescind the ordinance on requiring exposed aggregate and driveway aprons seems practical and sensible to me. I thank you on behalf of the residents who now may select materials of their own choosing once again. While a noble idea, it was, I think, too much control of individual property owners' choices. You can see in these pictures the continuity on the right of the, whatever driveway may cross over it, however new it is, however old, however matching or not matching, the sidewalk continues its path, unlike the selections to the left. Next one, please. Oh, I'm sorry. On the last one, I have one more note. Please note the truly broken appearance of the sidewalks, which diminishes the overall integrity of our village appearance. I think we can agree that the walk on the right is much more desirable, but the one, one might argue, as I'm certain this board responsibly has done, that these colors will fade over time and justify the cost savings gained by selecting a broom-finished Portland concrete cement rather than exposed aggregate. Here's an image of concrete poured at 419 Yewdale, and I'm not certain if it's three years ago or four years ago, but I thought I'd be conservative. The homeowner replaced several squares of sidewalk when they had their new driveway poured. It's clearly different than the rest of the exposed aggregate sidewalk and will undoubtedly remain so for several years. On the right is a home which is across the street from mine. The front sidewalk was replaced by the village this past September. There are countless homes, well-kept by owners, that now have a patch of colors in the sidewalks adjacent to their homes. It's a big disappointment to many of those responsible homeowners and their neighbors like me. The appearance of the block is affected by the appearance of the sidewalks. Next slide. Consistency in any village creates a sense of place. Riverside has introduced textured and colored inserts at sidewalk crossing locations for safety, which is important for all of us, but especially those of us with disabilities. I walked with a friend along Riverside Drive this past Monday, and we ran into a young man who is legally blind and was on his way to the library. We stopped to chat as Riverside residents do. It reminded me that people who use a cane to see rely on textures to know where they are in relation to their surroundings. Consistent textures and colors are part of the safety considerations of the Riverside sidewalk system. Next slide. Here we have a walk with only one section replaced in the distance. Its visual continuity interrupted, the other two drawing us into the distance more successfully. Next slide, please. Recently, director Bailey took time to help me understand some of the challenges that this board is facing on the subject of sidewalk repair and replacement in the village. First, this board deserves recognition for approving a formal inspection of the village sidewalks. Director Bailey uses this information effectively to schedule and prioritize the need for sidewalk replacements based on professionally obtained and organized information. The cost of obtaining the information could have paid for some 1,700 new exposed aggregate sidewalks, squares, or 2,700 in Portland cement. Your decision to spend taxpayer money on critical and accurate information, however, seems practical and well-spent to me. The sidewalk program allows Public Works to level significant displacements in existing sidewalks using saw cuts in lieu of replacements. It's extremely cost-effective and gives us the safer pathways at a fraction of the cost of replacement. I'm not sure who's to receive praise for establishing this portion of the sidewalk program, but I'm grateful for this wise use of our dollars. Finally, the cost of cement and the number of squares that can be replaced with the money available seems the greatest subject of discussion and dissension among you, the board members. I understand that Portland cement is 30% less expensive than exposed aggregate. In order to preserve the integrity of the historic village of Riverside, this necessarily becomes our burden as taxpayers, in my opinion. And like Dorothy, we are at a clear crossroads and must act wisely to choose the best direction to move Riverside forward successfully. Next slide, please. There's a set of rules for every great form in humanity, poetry and literature, music of all varieties, great automobiles, the engineering of bridges and details of buildings. Our village of Riverside is the same. There are rules to our sidewalk's appearance that is established as exposed aggregate. How would we imagine the yellow brick road to Oz so clearly if it had been repaired over the years with more available wood or limestone in the land? It surely was a more expensive endeavor, but nowhere do we see its continuity broken due to repairs. We cannot afford to undermine the great design of our village and still expect to keep its historic prestige and understated beauty for every resident to enjoy throughout the years. I ask this board to reconsider its decision to replace village walks with broom-finished Portland cement concrete. As temporary custodians and current trustees, I ask you to please keep our walkways continuous in color and texture throughout the village. Thank you.
Any questions for Chairwoman Lamontia?
I have a question. We're done for the current, for 2014, right, Ed?
We are.
Yeah, so we would be reconsidering this again for 2015.
Yes.
And I had voted in favor of retaining the aggregate, and so I would support a discussion again of this in 2015 prior to the, making a decision on the program.
And I, I voted for the Portland, but I would, I would take a look at it again if it, if, if what we, what was told to us that these would fade does not happen. But one of the things you did say is, you said, and maybe I didn't hear it right, 1,700 squares we could have done by what we spent for the, what was that, something?
If my math is right, which could be reworked, certainly.
Because we spent?
It should be reviewed. It should be reviewed.
We spent $20,000 on that?
On the sidewalk, I believe it was around?
17,000 is the number I used.
20,000.
Is that wrong?
372 squares cost 62,000, so you're talking about about 100 squares and that's 1,700 squares.
Okay. Thank you. That's fine. That's fine.
I, I'm not good at math.
Yeah. I won't argue it.
She still thinks it was a good use of money.
Yeah, I think, I think that, from, from me speaking with the trustees, that there's a consensus that we're willing to look at this again once we see whether, how these things are going to fade. But I have to say, what struck me about your presentation is the disparity among the aggregate.
Among the aggregate?
Yeah, so, you know, and this is one of the things I think that the board struggles with is, I think we all agree that we would like over time to have a consistency of appearance and aesthetics, but from what we've been informed, there's no guarantee that we'll get that with aggregate.
I, I understand what you're saying because I've seen, I know that, I know that there are different degrees of how, how textured the aggregate is. I will say, in the downtown area, if you put in a brushed Portland cement, I mean, it is very clear, I mean, the downtown area for sure would justify having a sample done to make sure that the aggregate is pretty darn close because it's a much, it's a bigger texture than what you might see on the regular sidewalks. There's no question about it. But it's defined, and I mean, I, you know, how many, how many pictures do you want to look at, but it's very well-defined. So all of the edges of the downtown pavement are smooth. They're all Portland cement that, you know, that have faded to the color, but the texture is very different than all of the walks that you actually are on when you're, when you're walking with a friend or, or going down the street. And I was imagining if we put, you know, if, if the Public Works Department had to replace a square there, it would be obviously out of place. So I think matching what's there is, like, somebody must have put red all the way up the Long Common, and it was probably lovely the day they did it, you know? But now it's been replaced with aggregate.
That's some of the old sidewalks, my friend, right? Those are the old granite ones?
It's probably very beautiful, yeah. But, but how do you, you know, where do you draw the line? So I mean, really, I found red, white, and blue out there in addition to the tan stuff, so it's.
We've agreed, Bill.
Yeah, we are gonna, once, yeah, we want to wait and see how this, how it.
Sure. I appreciate you considering it.
And then we'll take a look at it. Mr. Wright?
I think we had two or three questions. I'm sure a lot of people out there and in here understand, concrete is made up of ingredients. One of the ingredients is Portland cement. So no matter what the appearance of that concrete has out there, there's Portland cement in it, okay? The difference is in the aggregate. The red granolux was the original sidewalk, which I haven't been able to find out when it was done, but I'm guessing sometime in the 30s. And that was done by the two-step process that I explained before, where there was a concrete slab set, and then after that, partially set, they came back the next day and hand-troweled in another mixture of granite into a very fine, in a very fine form, to create that service, surface. In those days, incidentally, they didn't have curing compounds. That's not how concrete was cured. The way it was cured is by water. You sprayed it. You had somebody come back every couple of hours and, and spray it. The second thing is a curing compound. The curing compound's purpose is to retain moisture in the concrete and release it at a controlled rate so that the concrete properly cures, okay? The solid content of any curing compound is not significant enough to be called a sealer or create a color. It is what it is, okay? To create, okay, so now we're down to the aggregate. The aggregate in this part of the area comes out of the cook quarries, and that is limestone, crushed limestone, okay? That's what it is. And it's white. It's basically white. So when we mix the concrete up, we get a whitish-looking material, and that's the way it is. You could get aggregate out of, say, Romeoville that is quarried out of a, out of a hillside, which is gravel. And the gravel comes in various colors, okay? But we're going to get, by the nature of beast, concrete in this area that has an aggregate, the coarse aggregate of crushed limestone. The fine aggregate is sand, and the sand does have a color to it, okay? It lends some, some color to it. To create a exposed aggregate, there's two ways to do it. The way we did it across from the bank, if you look over there and in the central business district, when the central business district steering committee did that, was by the broadcast method, where we carefully selected a graded aggregate of various colors and we broadcast, it was broadcast after the concrete was, was placed and derbed and the first, probably the first troweling, you used to do this in the old days, that's firsthand troweling, it's broadcast on and then it's troweled in, and it's troweled in, and then the initial set is allowed to take place, and then it's washed off. The cement paste that surrounds it and covers it is washed off, making the exposed surface that you see over there. You notice how variegated it is? We did that intentionally. We selected an aggregate and, and we actually had to, had to train, the concrete contractor was trained to broadcast it to get that, that particular thing. When the village adapted the standard as being exposed aggregate, they went to a concrete mix that had that colored aggregate throughout it so it wasn't broadcast. So they could place the concrete like ordinary concrete and then brood it off improperly in most cases, but nonetheless, brood it off and expose the aggregate. So we'll never achieve the appearance that we see in front of the bank with any exposed aggregate concrete. It's impossible. We'll never be able to get the red sidewalk back unless we were willing to actually do that method where there is a special mix that is hard troweled with a granite aggregate in it. We're not going to be able to do that. So it comes out what it comes out. And by and large, Portland cement concrete comes out pretty darn white. It sort of does. And it sort of fades, and it's not really fading, it's really getting dirty is what it is, you know? But, you know, nonetheless, we think it, maybe it's getting, maybe it's fading, but it isn't. One thing you can do to eliminate that white color is apply, after the concrete is set, boiled linseed oil as a sealer, an honest-to-God sealer. Boiled linseed oil is not a curing compound. It is a sealer. And that will darken the concrete up. That will darken the concrete up and make it more like the concrete that's been around for a long, long time. Actually... make it more like the concrete that's been around for a long, long time. Actually, what you see by and large is the fact that, that those old concrete sidewalks that are fifty years old, not the, not the granolux ones, but the old ones, have just weathered, literally, and the cement paste at the top of the surface is, has eroded and gone away, and kind of made a semi-exposed aggregate sort of effect. But it's finer, it's closer to the granolux than it was to the exposed aggregate that we're trying to do now. So just bear all those little bits and pieces in mind, if we're ever going to be able to achieve anything, if continuity, it's gonna take a hundred years, like it took a hundred years to get to where we are today. And that's the fact of it. So you can, you can put exposed aggregate in, or you can go with the, the normal Portland cement concrete that's available, for three thousand PSI concrete, which is what the mix is, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Mr. Campbell?
Steve Campbell, 372 Fairbank. I too believe that we should maintain the exposed aggregate in the village. The aggregate can be specified so that it matches within three or four percent, whether it's put in this year, or five years from now, or ten years from now. And the village could investigate aggregate mixes. I am unfamiliar with the broadcast method. The typical way today is to utilize the aggregate throughout the concrete, and then, before it sets, to brush away the top Portland cream coat, as they call it. But the thing that disturbs me the most is that we have had exposed aggregate as a requirement in the village for a very, very long time, and it seems that for a small economy measure, we have thrown history out the window, and now have, as the demonstration showed, these creamy, white squares. And although they will get dirty, no amount of tinting is going to make them match, because the tint is a spray-on, and it wears off, if not in one year, in two. And if you'd like to see how different aggregates match over ten years, I would invite you to stop by 372 Fairbank, because that's three entirely different projects, although with the same five-eighths Beloit aggregate included within the concrete. So, and also, should the board decide next year to use the same concrete of the brushed broom finish, I would like to make a donation to the village, so that the people who voted for it, I'd like to put three squares at my expense in front of each of their houses, so that you might enjoy the ambiance of the new concrete. It should be the old way, they stick out like a sore thumb, and it strikes me as odd that we can, that we are forced to go that way for economy, when we can spend thousands and thousands of dollars cleaning up messes that other people have created for the village in the pursuit of certain projects. So I think that the forty-four hundred we spent to remove junk from the river would have been much better spent on exposed aggregate than cleaning up that mess. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll move on to reports of village officers. First up is the village president's report. I just have a couple things. First, I'd like to comment on two great events that we had last week. One, the car show, which exceeded yet again all, all expectations. We had over three hundred registered cars, close to three hundred and fifty total cars. And for anybody who had a chance to go out there, it was magnificent. We, if you go onto the, on Facebook, there are some nice shots from up on top of the, the tower, and the cars just looked like jewels spread out among the park. It was a beautiful event. So Rook Ravella and Riverside Garage, who, they do a great job every year, and it was, it was really wonderful. We also had our delayed concert in the park that had to be rescheduled from the torrential rains that we had back in September 5th. It was a smaller turnout, which was, we kind of expected, since it was a rescheduled, and it was getting a little bit later in the season. But Guitar Azul put on a wonderful show of a Spanish guitar and percussion, and it was, it was really a nice night. We had Chuchu out there serving tapas and sangria, and it was a really, really nice evening. So I just congratulate the Parks and Rec Department on doing a really excellent job on that concert. And that is all that I have. Manager Francis?
Let's have a couple of items. I just wanted to update the public on some Public Works projects that are going on right now. Currently, as of actually Monday, October 6th, at least that's what we're estimating as of today's date, milling will begin on York Road, and that's part of the resurfacing. Burling, we anticipate that milling will begin next week as well, for that resurfacing program. With regard to various curbs and gutters were replaced today over on Burling as well. An update on the Groveland and Park Place Water Main project, all residents and fire hydrants have been tied into that new water main, and currently, they are providing access holes for the water main lining project that, and are currently excavating between Groveland and the river. Finally, we have Riverside Ride that is scheduled for this Saturday. I wanted to thank Director Malkiati and his staff on working diligently on this event. Also, I wanted to thank Director Bailey and Director App for assisting with EDC's abbreviated scavenger hunt that would, which will take place following the ride. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions? Moving on, next up is the approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items that anyone would like removed for a discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion and second to approve.
Someone.
Motion by Ms. Sussman. Second by Ms. Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman, aye.
Trustee Hamilton, aye.
Trustee Pollak-
Aye.
Trustee Ballerin-
Aye.
Trustee Collins-
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, reports of departments, commissions, and trustee liaisons. Do any trustees have a report this evening? Hearing none, we'll-
I did my report.
Jessica did her report. Next up, according to the agenda, is a first reading of the, of the village sign ordinance. We've had a number of questions from trustees asking for additional information on this ordinance, and given that we also have the continued budget discussion tonight, it's the consensus of agreement that we're gonna postpone the first reading of, of the sign ordinance. However, if there's anyone here that wanted to make a public comment about the sign ordinance, you're welcome to do so at this time. But we will, we will take it up at our next meeting and have the first reading of the sign ordinance at that time. Mr. Campbell?
I'm still Steve Campbell. It's interesting, as I read the proposed sign ordinance and the CMAP study, because they seem to be, in many ways, in conflict. The CMAP study notes how difficult it is, even for pedestrians, to know which businesses are in our CBD because of the signage. It talks about how we are not gathering people from outside the community to the districts, and directs us to put signs up to bring people into town. But unless you're driving down the street very slowly, paying attention to everything except traffic and pedestrians, you can't see them. And the reality is, is our major resource, so to speak, would be the rush hour traffic that occurs at the intersection of Forest and Burlington and Long Common. And if you will stand or drive through that intersection, you will see that it is impossible to tell if there are virtually any businesses in that block from the inability to read the signs in front of them. And so, as we move towards wall signs, nothing that projects, it will make that identification even more difficult for the individual businesses. And it's not just, it's not like a house address that denotes the house, it's something that advertises the business. And if you have to be within twenty-five feet of it to know the business is there, it doesn't really offer much of an advertising opportunity. And in this respect, I believe that our strength, in terms of our buildings, as the types of buildings that I own in another zip code, are the small business entrepreneur, and we need to create an environment to assist them. And we want signage that is, for lack of a better word, cuter, but yet, as in sidewalks, we move the village in the other direction. And the types of signs that the village is going to prohibit, some of which are already in the code, as internally illuminated signs, will this reflect on, for example, the PNC Bank, where their letters are lit from our interior illumination, but are an individual letter, based upon just your understanding of what's in the current proposed ordinance? Would those be allowed or not allowed? And this is not official, but I'm, I'm just asking a question. Are-
It's, it's the way I read it, their sign would not be allowed because of the raceway. And I, I agree with you.
And, and listen, it's projecting signs, although they are not pretty. And I concur that, but they are the best method to locate a business for people that are passing by. And the small business entrepreneur is who we can market to. We're not going to have national retailers come to downtown Riverside for a plethora of reasons. So, and the sign ordinance, as I read it, as it's proposed, is also has a number of contradictory items. At the very beginning, it, it speaks of nothing shall project over the public right-of-way, but later on, it says you can have a blade sign. Which one's operative? Is it the no-projection over the right-of-way, or is it, unless it's a blade sign? I don't think that that's clearly articulated within, within the ordinance. And I, I'm a pretty good guy with village ordinances, I have dealt with them for many, many years, and when I read it, and it becomes very, very confusing, you can imagine the normal small business person. And the small businessman, he knows what he does, but he doesn't understand the bureaucracy. They don't understand the process. And there's also a little, a little, there's a passage that, if I might be allowed to bring it up on my phone, unless somebody has it, too much work. But it speaks about how, that, it almost sounds like design review, and that the sign is for the benefit of the community as a whole, without regard for any benefit for the business owner, or the property owner, or the neighbors. It, to me, it seems as though the ordinance would treat the people applying for a sign as though they, you know, they're, they're here to pillage the community. And certain other things, to require insurance, just with the tendering of an application. What if the application's denied, that someone's got an insurance policy just to turn in the application form? I am unfamiliar with that in any other type of process whatsoever, in any other community, and any other application and permit requirement. So I think that this ordinance works at cross purposes. Do we need economic development in the village? And I'm asking, is, is, are we seeking economic development? And what would be our ultimate goal for the CBD district? Would it be a vibrant and dynamic district with customers that come in and spend money, that pay the village sales tax, or is it that it's a wasteland? We have to help the people bring customers in. A sign at Harlem and Burlington isn't going to direct the traffic from Harlem into the Central Business District. But people that drive through the village every day during rush hour, that could look down the street and see that we have eighteen businesses, because they can read the name and read the sign, they're already in town. We don't have to bring them in, they're here. All they have to do is make a left turn, or a right turn, or go straight ahead and park. And it also strikes me as odd, with all the recommendations of the CMAP plan, that all of the things that the village is supposed to do are put later in the project, but we're gonna regulate and restrict the private property and the private business owner first. Why don't we work on the parking issues first? Why don't we do some of the other things? That it's the village's job to do, as opposed to jumping on the private sector first, while the parking and the other structural difficulties that we have are left unaddressed, when it is completely within the village's power, because it's the village's direction and action only that's required to get involved in those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Anyone else on the signs? Ms. Lamontia?
I'm still Diana Lamontia. So I'm, I just wanted to follow up on what was just stated, since you are considering the signage. I have not reviewed the ordinance myself, I can't pretend to know. But I will tell you that as a citizen, I was just going downtown to bring my dog to the new groomer, I'm so excited to have there, and I think they're qualified. And it took me two passes to locate the shop that they're in. I thought, now wait, are they in this first block, or in the second block? I know they're on the south side of the street, and I've already been there before. I've been there two times. So that's me walking and me driving. It's very difficult to find them. I was a part of the CMAP initiative, the, the group that helped to formulate many of those ideas, and they were pretty well thought out. And the signage has been, or was, a very large topic, both for pedestrian traffic, as well as for the cars going through, from the, from the furthest reaches of the community, to just people getting off the train, and on the train, and coming from the library. So I happened to be at a, a gathering, I think it might have been an Olmsted gathering, they were putting on, putting on something with the, with the pots, the flower pots, a year, a year ago, and we were standing right outside the village hall, and I heard a, a gentleman, kinda grumpy, you know, he was hungry, he was thirsty. He said, "What is this? This town doesn't even have any restaurants or anything?" And it stuck me right through the heart, because there was nothing in front of our village hall, in our central gathering area, to let him know that you can walk around the corner and have a choice of several nice places. So please look at the CMAP information, study it, and consider it in your own creations of ordinances for our village, because it's, it's so very necessary for the vitality of the downtown, and the citizens. We want the downtown to be thriving. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Okay, moving on, next up are considerations, and this is a continued budget discussion. Tonight, we're gonna be focusing on the general fund operational component of, of the budget. Director Francis, manager Francis, sorry, you're wearing two hats tonight, is going to give us a brief overview, and then we're just gonna go through a department at a time, and, and talk about it. So, Manager Francis?
Certainly. Essentially, the, the agenda history hasn't changed from the last meeting. Staff just hit, took the feedback that was received at the previous meeting and incorporated those changes. With regard to the budget, I would recommend for this evening, as President Sells had mentioned, that we nearly focus on the operating expenses, and then for the second meeting in October, that that be nearly focused on capital, and any type of general operating follow-up.
So before you start going through department at a time, did anyone have any questions for Jessica about just general, general background issues? Do you want to just say a word about the revenue projections, and how, how those are, those are derived?
Certainly. For, well, for the current fiscal year, we are projecting a surplus of three hundred and forty-four thousand. That includes the sale of the Northgate property. And essentially, the staff, how we look at general fund revenue, for the most part, it is a straight line. We obviously look out prior years, and then figure out what the projection is, based on annual incremental increases, if there's been any spike, any type of pending legislation, for example, places free eating tax, if there are any new businesses that have come into Riverside, and those potential projections. But for the most part, everything remains relative. But for the most part, everything remains relatively flat from year to year with the exception of the property tax, which for this upcoming year is set to increase by CPI, which is the one and a half percent. Previously, it had increased by 1.74%.
Okay, great, thank you. So, let's start then on page one of eight under the expenditures. You have before you a suggested list of possible budget cuts that Manager Francis and I have discussed and wanted to give to you for your consideration. And as we go through the different departments, we can take a look at those and then any other suggestions that you might have. Our department heads are here to answer any questions that you might have. So, beginning with the village managers' section, are there any questions or concerns, suggestions with regard to any of the expenditures you see on those pages?
I just have a general comment. Ellen and I are financial liaisons of the village and I just wanted to explain that we're being a little quiet tonight because we, thank you, Jessica and Marco, we spent about almost two hours, now we're in 45 minutes with you yesterday, talking about these issues and any of the smaller questions that we might have and even some of the larger ones. So, it's not because we're not interested or didn't read this carefully, and thank you for your time again.
No problem.
So, one item that we have identified that we thought could be removed is the digitizing of the images for the historical commission because of the existence of our intern. We think that we might be able to accomplish that project with intern help, so.
What page are you on?
That would be on page 23. If you look, there's actual.
Okay, so you're through the village manager part.
I think, isn't the historical?
I think historical is missing actually from the deck.
Historical is appended as a separate budget.
Oh, as opposed to?
And that, but that's technically under the village manager.
Correct. That is not.
Discretion.
No, they did a summary sheet. As opposed to the line item. Okay, all right, that's fine.
And the 5,000 is basically part of the contractual services.
Can I just, just so I can report back to them, we think, I understand we have a new intern, which is fabulous, and you believe some of her time will be used for the digitizing.
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
We'll prioritize her project.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, what is in the village manager's budget or what is and is proposed to be removed under yours is the facade program. And I think, I think just the facade program.
The community events.
And community events.
Correct.
And, you know, discussing those with Manager Francis, our thought was that at this point, given the pending nature of the Burlington streetscape work that's gonna be done, it might, we should hold off on the facade program until, and also with the sign ordinance. There's a lot of preparatory work, I think, before we're ready to institute something like that. With regard to the community events, given the experience we had this past year, I think that that's, it's likely that we could get sponsors and be able to fund a lot of that through a private-public relationship instead of just the village funding it. So, I would suggest that we take a look at that for 2015.
And that doesn't imperil our farmer's market at all?
No, this is just extra events like the concert we just had. Yes.
No, no, I'm just, thank you.
So, are we okay with those two?
Yes.
Can we just, page two of eight, 41123-330, second from the bottom, we go from 52014 to 3500 and 2015, I like the round. What's the, I don't understand what the increase there was.
Planning and zoning previously were separated. And what Director App did is she consolidated everything under the planning and zoning commission instead of having separate line items under planning, separate items under zoning. Because previously, they were two separate commissions, and so she's consolidated. So, if you look below, there was $0 budgeted under zoning board of appeals. She's bought everything under to plan so that she only has to refer to one line item.
So, it's all been consolidated?
Correct.
Okay, right. Just 26, 16. What is that?
For planning and zoning.
Yeah, the 3350.
That is for professional services, so that includes, Sonia, can you jot my number?
On page two of eight, for the plant commission.
Professional services.
3350.
I believe that included the addition of court reporters.
Okay.
The one that.
Right.
Thank you.
I had a question on the cost of the court reporters, listed here is $1,500. Didn't it say in the, somewhere else that I read that it was $500 per session or something like that?
Could you come up to that?
But is 1,500 enough is what I'm wondering? Are there only three through the year?
This year, we had, I think last year and this year, we had kind of an increase in the number of public hearings just with a lot of the changes that were being made to combine the planning and zoning, the plan commission and zoning board of appeals. But we just kind of tried to throw an average number. We don't necessarily have to have a court reporter for every public hearing, but we just wanted to be able to have kind of a placeholder number in there. But it could be more if we do want to have a court reporter and it's a longer meeting and we need to have a quick turnaround. It could be closer to the 3,000 number that has been in the past when you were having some of your bigger public hearings like with the town center and some other things.
Well, and also, as a follow-up, one of the discussions that we've just had, and we haven't even checked with the cable commission, so I don't know if this is even a possibility, but I know that they have a very quick turnaround time as it relates to filming the village board meetings and whether or not it makes sense instead of spending those funds on a court reporter, potentially having a quick turnaround time, seeing whether or not the cable commission would be able to tape those particular meetings.
And there was another suggestion too, and that is that the time constraint is between the meeting of the plan commission and the meeting of the board of trustees. And it seems to me we could also ask the plan, if there's a reason why it has to be turned around in three or four days, then perhaps we can also ask the plan commission to meet earlier so that we don't have to expedite the transcription. We could actually ask them to meet, there have been, in the number of years I've been on the board, there have been very few instances where a petitioner or a new policy has needed a three or a four-day turnaround. So, if that were to be the case, if there were to be a legitimate emergency, then it's also possible to ask the plan commission to move their meeting back a little bit so that there's more time in between. But really, there, we, I can't remember an instance when a petitioner has been so rushed that he or she needs that three or four-day turnaround. I understand that we want to be as helpful as possible to our residents. Even so, most people fill out the applications in plenty of time. So, I don't see this, the expediting, the extra cost for expediting had as an issue.
Some of the issue there is if it is a public hearing, we have publication requirements that we have to do. And so, some of that, you know, if we're gonna move the meeting up, and that also means they have to get their materials in earlier so I can make sure that it's published in the paper in enough time for it to be. So, if we move it earlier, then that also means that the deadline then moves earlier. So, depending on, you know, if it's an emergency, a lot of times those people are coming in kind of last minute. But, you know, we can work with, you know, I can check with the planning and zoning commission and see if there are other dates that are available for them that we could move up a meeting if we needed to.
Or just schedule the meetings so that there's more time between the plan commission, the monthly plan commission.
Have it on a Monday versus Wednesday or something.
Yeah, just, I think there are other options. I don't think that it's necessary that we have to pay a lot more money for a three or four-day turnaround, that's all.
What do you think about the idea of having it televised or video recorded?
If we can, if the people who want to look at them have access to it, can get, you mean to get it on YouTube right away or something like that?
Well, for example, the car show, which was Sunday, is linked on YouTube as of this afternoon.
So, that's four days. Yeah. I don't know, I'd have to think about it. It's.
You know, I don't.
Well, let me just ask this, pending that is a possibility. I do think that we need to provide direction about whether or not we want a standard practice to have a court reporter and verbatim transcripts at the public hearings. But we've talked about it, but we haven't really reached a decision. I think that should be your decision, not the staff's. So, do you want transcripts?
Would you accept a video if you could get that? If it could be done in a week? I don't know what it would cost.
As a personal, certainly it's a good option. I think on a personal response, if people want, it would be two or three hours watching a video versus 45 minutes reading a transcript. So, if people want, you know, on this board, I think as trustees, we have an obligation to understand how the plan, what goes on in the debate at the plan commission, particularly for policy changes. If there's a consensus that the board members are willing to spend three hours watching a video of that meeting, my preference, that's why I said it's a personal thing, my personal preference would be to take the transcript on the train and read it, but I understand that.
I also think that if there is disagreement about even, say, all of us watched the meeting, we could still have a bunch of different opinions as to what we remember from what we watched. I would prefer to have a transcript in front of me if I'm having a discussion that I could quote from. I just think, I mean, I think it's a great idea, but I don't think it's necessarily going to get the job done that we want done. I think a transcript is a better idea.
Doug, what do you think?
I don't feel the need for a transcript or video recording. I trust that the staff will provide all the critical information we need from the plan commission to be able to make a decision. But if other trustees feel more comfortable with the transcript, that's fine.
I guess where I'm coming from is that in my, in my experience in real estate, we always had to have transcripts. Every single time, we had to have a transcript, you know, and it's just something that I came to expect that was necessary because of a question came up. And I didn't trust, no one trusted, well, I wasn't the trustee, in my case, I was the petitioner, but no one trusted the remembrance or even the staff interpretation. They wanted to see what was actually said at the meeting. That has been my experience.
And for me, it's not a question, Doug, of trust staff or faith in staff. I've said that several times before and I, and I, that's not what I mean and I've never said that. I just think that when you have to summarize, you're gonna lose the detail and it's often the detail that's telling in a discussion among seven individuals. And so, I really don't think it's fair to represent it. Several times, I've heard you say, it's not, I trust the staff implying that there's some lack of trust from the rest of us and I.
Oh, no, I didn't mean to.
Yeah, okay, that's not what it is. I trust you.
I did provide you guys with a transcript of the public hearing that we had last week.
Yeah, thank you.
And was that more helpful than the summary discussions perhaps you've been getting in the past?
Yeah, for me it was.
Okay.
Now, did you do?
I did. I spent Thursday chugging that out all day.
I just don't think that's a good use of a director's time.
But we do have, you know, we do have an intern that can be helping out somewhat with some of that hopefully going forward if we wanna try, at least for the rest of the year, to do that in-house.
So, yeah, I guess I'd rather have it in writing.
Well, I think in a situation like this, we should err on the side of the folks who want the additional information. I also think though that the idea of televising, taping and showing the public hearings satisfies a different opportunity in terms of letting the residents who couldn't make that meeting see it. But I think, I think I see a consensus that, well, maybe not complete consensus.
I would love to know what the cost is on the taping of it too.
On the one.
Taping.
Yeah, we'll look into that.
But yeah, so, we do want transcripts.
So, we definitely want the transcripts. All right.
We want an expensive transcript.
And do we want, I guess my question then for clarification for budgeting is, should I be erring towards the side of caution with the very quick turnaround? I believe they call it the like, I don't know, it was more than expediated, it was, you know, accelerated with just two to three, you know, two to three days versus the one week turnaround versus two-week turnaround, which is standard.
I think that should be on a case-by-case basis because to trustee's point, I can't
remember a time in my time as a trustee that we had to have it in two days. So, I would just use the standard pricing and if it comes up occasionally that we need expedited, we'll just do that.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
And I'll bring up the videotaping at the next table.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay. So, moving on now to finance, I believe. And the one item that we were able to identify in finance is page three of four of the finance section, which is the IT. Manager Francis thinks that we could get by for this year in reducing the 28,000 back to 18, so we could cut 10 with regard to the server replacements and software updates.
What's the general ledger number?
She's got page numbers on that.
29.
Page 29, and it's equipment replacement, 41920-741.
Can you, 41920-340. We discussed this LIDAR last year. I don't even think it was last year. This is a topographical flyover. And the way I understand it is we can get that from the Illinois State GIS and/or the Cook County on a fairly two-week basis if we needed it.
It is Cook County and usually they don't provide, as I'm told, they don't provide refreshed information. I believe it's every three to five years to communities. I could be wrong on that. But with our own separate flyover with regard to the LIDAR, since we had had questions that have come up in the past, and I'm sure we'll have questions again in the future with regard to drainage issues, back when Peter Scolero was here, we thought this would be helpful for the departments to have, this is a reference point and also the village engineer. The cost was original, is $26,000, but it's shared between the water fund and the general fund.
And so, is this an annual cost?
No, that's just to get the flyover, to get the information, then input in the GIS.
But then how often do you have to repeat it? I mean.
Well, that's on the basis of the board, how quickly or how much we want to refresh it. It's much more detailed than what the county does provide.
So, Jessica, it was in the budget for this year, for 2014, it just wasn't done this year. So, it's kind of rolling it over?
The board did not approve.
Okay.
We approved it for 2014. But I would, I mean, I thought what we were supposed to, what Peter was gonna do was try to see if the Illinois State, my understanding, the Illinois State GIS or geographical service or whatever has a copy of this that we can get and/or Cook County. You know, Cook County, even if it's six months or a year old.
She's saying five years old.
Yeah, I don't think it's, it hasn't been around that long. Plus, we don't know, we're guessing. I'd rather take the $13,000 out and look at other options that we have at our fingertips with the state and federal before we spend that kind of money.
I mean, do we have a sense that there is a pressing, is there a pressing specific need or immediately current information at this point or?
With regard to LIDAR, I mean, we've had continuous issues with regard to drainage questions. Sonia's dealt with plenty since she started with the village. Since I've started, I've known of numerous complaints with regard to drainage and complaints of residents changing different things within their property that affects drainage. So, that's why we felt that this would, this information would be incredibly helpful for not only staff but also for Christopher Burke who handles our engineering.
But I thought a flyover didn't address drainage issues. I thought that was.
The LIDAR will show the contours, so it'll show the different elevations for those particular areas.
And then how does it work with?
Can you talk about it? Because I thought a flyover wasn't something that wouldn't really show specific property drainage issues.
Well, not necessarily. It can be used to find out where those issues are happening. And so, it's just current information that Christopher Burke would then be able to have. So, if somebody is saying, I've had a drain, you know, I've had this problem for three years since my neighbor built that garage and it's, you know, I've had flooding ever since in my basement since they put up that garage, well, then we have some of that information that we can, we can use to kind of see what the spot elevations are. that we can, we can use to kind of see what the spot elevations are, what the, they are. So they can use that in kind of determining what changes in the grade might have happened versus the LIDAR that we have that would be pre-construction, that would have been from, is it two thousand and ten, I think is the last LIDAR information that we have. So it might even be.
And this information would not only be utilized by obviously Community Development, Christopher Burke, but also Public Works would have utilization on it as well.
What do you think?
I would still like to see what we can get out of Cook County and the state before we spend this kind of money.
We have, I don't know, Joe, we just have so many drainage issues in this town, so many complaints from residents.
The information is already there, the information is already available for us to have because it's already been done.
You mean if the county?
Cook County's already done it. It's there. The information is there. I don't know how accurate or how frequent or how current it is.
Why don't we get that information?
Can we defer this?
Let's put, let's put a star by this one and then let's, let's get those questions answered. Anything else under finance? Moving on to building, we have those suggestions under the Building Department. Going once, going twice. Next up is Police. The one item that we identified under Police was the, the overtime, which is on page thirty-five or four of nine, whichever way you're looking at it. Now, this, this is pending further discussion with, with Chief Weitzel, but we were basically going on the prior, the prior numbers and it seemed prudent to us that, that we could reduce the two thousand and fifteen expectation for overtime from two forty to two twenty because we do have a new officer that will be coming on force in January. So presumably that, that will help reduce overtime, as will the request to have a grant rider for the Police Department, which would also free up additional staff time. So we felt comfortable that we could, we could reduce that number back to, to two twenty versus two forty.
So the grant rider is added into that?
That's a decision for you to make. Oh, you mean is the grant rider part of the two forty? No, the grant rider is not part of the two forty. The grant rider would be a separate addition of eight thousand.
Well, I'd like to see the grant rider left, be left in.
I agree with that, but I think that's value added for the residents and for the department. So that was all we saw on Police. Are there any other items that, any of you found? Okay, so moving on then to Fire. The one we identified is on page forty-four, page four of six, under salaries and wages. And Manager Francis can explain this. This, this has something to do with, with how the staffing is, is allocated. Do you just want to say a word about what, what that means?
Sure. It's based on just allocations. It's a paid-on call department. It can vary from year to year. And based on historically, even though where certain individuals are classified, that was where preliminary number came into play. However, based on history, we're, we are comfortable with the fact of keeping it flat for two thousand and fifteen.
And then on page forty-five, the PSSI is going to remain flat. So it will be the four hundred and fifty thousand figure, not the four-six-four figure. So that's where the reduction of fourteen thousand dollars comes in for the PSSI. Are there other items anyone had under Fire? Next up is Public Works. We had nothing identified for Public Works, except I was wondering why we needed eight thousand dollars in mower maintenance when we're buying two new, brand-new mowers?
We didn't buy them yet.
So if we buy them, do we need the eight thousand dollars?
Sure. If, clearly if the Village Board ultimately decides to purchase those mowers, that mower maintenance sure goes down significantly. But it's just projected based on previous experience.
So if you had two brand-new mowers, how much would it be?
Depends, well, depends on the old one that we're keeping primarily. The other two should be under warranty. But I think, you know, two thousand dollars would be more than adequate.
Beginning of the mowing season, you would have them tight?
Yeah, we, we would probably purchase them off the state purchasing program.
So pending your discussion at our next meeting of capital, if we spend sixty thousand dollars, we'll save five, so.
Six.
Six, six thousand. Anything else under Public Works? Recreation? Okay, so now what I would suggest then is now let's go back to the other, you, you have before you a scheduled fiscal year two thousand and fifteen operation budget discussion showing changes. Now these, so these are, are add-ins in essence. The first one you see there is reinvestment in Community Development Building Department. This is the increase in personnel costs due to the restructuring we did this past year. That would be an increased cost of eighty-six thousand one forty-seven. You also note the creation of the foreman position in Public Works. That for two thousand and fifteen would be the forty-nine, four-six-two. One item yet to be discussed is the thirty thousand dollar marketing plan.
Please include the benefit costs also, this is not just.
Correct, no.
My suggestion on the marketing would be since, since, since we've let the EDC know that we need a, a clear idea of precisely what they have in mind and what, what the word marketing means in this context, that we should leave that there to, so that they feel like they're not operating in a vacuum. And then they can come back to us and present us with, with what they have in mind. Is that okay with everybody?
Can I ask a question about that? Jessica, in your write-up, you said that this also includes improvements to the visitor's center, this thirty thousand dollars.
That was per the discussion at the EDC meeting. I think some of it has already been incorporated this year, such as we're, we're looking at lighting and potential signage. So some of it may actually come to fruition in two thousand and fourteen. But initially Director Apt had included both the visitor's center and then also the marketing plan, I believe.
So is the full thirty thousand needed then if some of it's being used this?
The, the majority of that money was for the marketing plan, not for the visitor's center. The visitor's center was a nominal amount, I believe. Because a lot.
Just thought I'd better ask.
Yeah. I mean, they, they, I mean, they have discussed the idea of presenting us with a, you know, kind of an extension of the visitor's center concept that would be inside the train station and would incorporate like flat-screen TVs and things like that. But the, the visitor's center, it's too bad that Diana had left because that, the visitor's center that's, that's taking shape now and where it used to go down into the, the tunnel is, is nearing completion. And it has the kind of information that, that she was talking about in terms of where our businesses are located and it'll have informational signage, notices from the chamber, that kind of thing. So that's, that should be finished within the next month.
I was just asking about your write-up, Jess. I was just asking about your write-up, that's all.
And the, and the amount on the marketing plan also will vary depending on what we decide that we want to do as far as having a marketing plan, you know, what do we want them to do, which is something EDC will bring back to us in a future meeting, so.
So I, I believe I saw a consensus that we support the grant rider. Yes?
Yes.
Let's, I want to skip over the Police pension because that deserves a fuller discussion. The McAdams landscaping, this number, I would say leave this number in at this point, but let's keep in mind that as of July of next year, we're going to be making a radical change to the planter beds in the CBD. So I suspect that this number is going to end up being less because we're not going to have the maintenance issues with the raised planters that we now currently have with all the grade level planters. However, it may be that we want to use some of this money for plantings. So I would say.
From a policy standpoint, I support keeping it in.
Yeah. And, and to me, it goes to the beautification and the property values of, of the town. So now circling back to.
One question I have on the McAdams though, is, is there any, are we going to, are we going to not have an extra seasonal or is this, is this relieving some pressure on already staff for them to do others? Or are we going to have less staff or the Public Works? Well, the biggest variable for us is part-time seasonals and we can adjust how many we have. The Central Business District, planter bed maintenance includes all of the planter beds in, in the Central Business District and one weeding per month, spring and fall cleanup. Maybe no surprise that we didn't spend all that much time in them and maybe that's why this has been bid out. So the big, like I say, the biggest variable is whether, how many seasonals, part-time seasonal we hire. We could hire one less than we have this year. But one of the things that I've noted this particular year at least is with the force of particularly seasonals that we have, we've been able, I think, to keep a, a good maintenance level of the, the grass, you know, the.
Mowing.
Mowing, the common areas and triangles and that kind of stuff. So, and, you know, and I think that would be a goal for everybody is to maintain that level of service. I, I think the town looked pretty good this year. And then, so I don't, I don't have any specific ideas as far as whether or not we should reduce the force, but we can, that's where we can reduce it is a part-time seasonal. That's, those workers would be the ones that would have been devoted to the Central Business District planters.
And I, I think that we had talked about that, I don't see it so much as replacing your staff because it was something that we didn't, we thought needed more attention than what it was getting. So it's like a higher level of service that we're looking for and felt that they were specialized and could do it actually more economically than if you did hire someone. So I don't see it so much as reducing the staff that we have.
They just went through, excuse me, they just went through the Central Business District and they went through quickly. I mean, they, they do the same type of, this is McAdam, they do the same work in Oak Park and I think Forest Park. So they're kind of geared up for it, but I was fairly impressed with how quickly they went through all of, there's a lot of planter beds in the Central Business District. So anyway, that's, I think we're holding our own basically with the staff we have.
And a lot of that work was done by the volunteers too when you would do the.
We support a lot of volunteer work.
Okay. So now going back to the, the Police pension, because this is a perennial problem. And with regard to the thirty thousand dollar figure, would you like to just explain? Because as I, as, as Jessica can give, you make it much more clear than I can. But, so I'm just going to let you do that.
Okay. Well, there has been much discussion about our rate of return assumption, funding level of Police Pension and how to potentially curtail what we see as our funding level dropping. Essentially, on an annual basis, the Police Pension, we, we receive a property tax levy, but no money is actually making its way into the Police Pension Fund and being deposited to then be invested. We actually ask on an annual basis anywhere from two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand from the Police Pension Fund on the various investment returns. That being the case, I had made the recommendation when I first started that we start looking at Police Pension Fund, the rate of return and what we could do to somewhat curtail our costs as it relates to annually, at least not asking for so much money from the Police Pension Fund, allowing them to have that money to then invest, having more money on hand to pay out for annuities. Because that's essentially our, our costs are the, the annuities. And one of the discussions that this board had had last fiscal year was the rate of return. And it was decided that instead of adjusting, formally adjusting the rate of return by a quarter percent from seven point five to seven and a half, the board would contribute an additional thirty thousand, but we would keep the rate of return the same, keep actuarial assumptions the same. However, we would contribute more than what the actuary was recommending. And so that's the premise of that thirty thousand. Because right now what is budgeted and what is put in there is revenue from property tax for Police Pension is just what is being recommended by the actuary. The actual expense that you're seeing under Police Administration for, to the Police Pension Fund is that additional thirty thousand. So it's not that the village is required to contribute that additional thirty thousand, but I would recommend that it's a good practice because we're essentially playing a little bit of catch-up. And anything that we can do to curtail some of this is highly recommended.
Jessica, you said, you said the rate of return, you said change it from seven point five to seven and a half. I don't think that's what you meant.
No, I, it's, it is currently seven point seven five. And the recommendation was initially tweak it down to seven and a half.
Seven and a half, yes, okay, all right.
And, and this is one of the things that's haunted, I know this board and past boards as well, because this, nobody's getting seven point seven five or seven and a half. I think the actual return's around five.
Correct. If you look at the five-year average, it's right around five. They had a good year last year, I think it was upwards of ten percent. But that's, in the case of Police Pension Funds, it's more of an anomaly.
And my understanding right now, we're, we're approximately at the fifty percent funding level. We have until twenty forty or twenty twenty-four.
Twenty forty, I believe, to be ninety percent.
To be ninety.
Ninety percent, yeah.
So another way this could be done would be to not budget this, to wait until the end of the year to see if we have a surplus and make a decision then. But I, I personally don't like that idea. I mean, we had this obligation.
That's the state Illinois way of doing things.
This has been kicked down the road so long, you know, I personally don't want anything to do with that.
And I think we have villages nearby us that have much greater pension issues facing them than we do. I think we need to lead by example in this.
I certainly agree, but I want to make sure you had all the options. So we're okay with that? Okay. I believe, does anyone else have anything? So I think, you know, if we, if, for the sake of calculation, if we were to include the LIDAR, we've made cuts this evening of ninety-seven thousand, I believe is what I get. And then there was also a typo that would also reduce it by nine. So, but I would, I would still even having done this, you know, I, I would encourage the staff to take one more run through this. I mean, as we were going through today, you know, we were finding thousand dollar, two thousand dollars here and there. That is not a level of detail that I think that this board should be entertaining in terms of trying to look at those kind of numbers. But it's a level of detail you should be entertaining. So, so if you'll, you know, go through it, sharpen your pencil one more time and see if, see if you can find some of those, those extra savings. Anything else? Is there any new business?
I want to thank Jessica and Marco for a great job and for meeting with us yesterday. And they make it a real pleasure to go through and ask questions because they have all of the answers. They're very well explained.
Do we have a goal that we are going to set forth to our department heads to try to, to, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at a hundred and nine. Are we going to say we want to see, I mean, if we just say, you know, just take a look, I want to make sure to take a look, real hard look. I mean, should we have some sort of?
That was my opinion too, is because we can look at this, but I mean, they have a much better idea than we do of what is actually able to be looked at, so.
Come over to the suggestions.
What does this work out to? If we're talking a hundred and ten thousand, what does that work out to from the overall budget?
Well, I, I mean, that's fine, but I, I would point out that, you know, we're at, we're at a hundred and, a hundred and nine. But we also have made a significant investment in our Community Development Department and in Public Works. I just don't want to pick a number out of the air and, and, you know, if you have, if you have a number that has a rationale to it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, what percentage of the budget is this? What is a hundred and nine?
Less than one, it's right around one, yeah.
Well, out of the general fund, it should be out of the general fund, not out of the, it's just a nine point one out of nine million.
So it's nine million for the general fund and we're talking a hundred and nine thousand.
Yeah, but I understand.
Yeah, but I understand what Joe's saying because it's a departure from how we've done this in previous years. I mean, 109,000 is a lot of money when, over time.
So, do you want 109,000 dollars in cuts bound?
Well, I would just like to hear what staff, taking another look at it, because it is a major change from previous, the previous decisions of this board.
What is, what is the percentage of 109 of our general fund?
It's about 1% or so.
What's the general fund?
Nine million, nine million, something like that.
So, 1%, that's, I could, I could.
A little over 1%.
Yeah, because it's nine and a half million or something.
1%, you're pretty good.
Yeah.
I, some one way, I'd like to say, you know, we should, we should take another whack at this. Other way, they say, you know, I, 1%, that's not a lot. I mean, I couldn't do my, I couldn't do my budget within 1%. And my household income is not $9 million.
It's your boardroom, Joe. That gets you in trouble.
And as President Sals had mentioned, you just bear in mind that some of those changes, we have made certain cuts to operating because overall, just the personnel costs, we're looking at 130,000 that have increased.
No, I, yeah, I realize that. And actually, the increase is less than the personnel increases. I understand that the 128,000 that's being proposed is less than the sum of, of Public Works and community development positions. I do.
I trust our department heads that they could come up with 1% cuts, is my opinion.
Yeah.
Okay.
If they can't, they can't. I'm not saying that they have to, you know, we're not saying, but just could you take another book and see if you could come up with 1%? We would really appreciate that. Otherwise, we're gonna have to look at mowers again. So.
That's right. Or concrete, God, you're big.
No.
All right. So, I think, I think everyone back there at the back wall hears this. Right. There is no new business. So, I'd ask for, we have no need for executive session. So, I'd ask for a motion second to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sussman, second by Ms. Collins. This call to roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerin.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.